Okay, and we are live. The meeting of the City of Socorro City Council is set to begin. First and foremost, first and foremost, the City of Socorro would like to thank everyone and ask for your patience during this difficult time we have been presented with. Everyone, please remember to silence any electronics to avoid sound interruption. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated. Any violators are subject to called disconnection and possible prosecution. In accordance with section four one eight point zero one six of the Texas Government Code and by order of the Office of the Governor issued March sixteen twenty twenty, the City Council of the City of Socorro will broadcast the meeting scheduled today, Thursday, June eighteen twenty twenty at six P M from City Hall Chambers located at eight sixty Rio Vista Road Socorro, Texas via telephone conference and livestream in order to advance the public health goals and practice social distancing to slow the spread of the coronavirus COVID nineteen. The public that signed up and any presenters will be called upon by the presiding officer during the meeting to speak during public comment or their agenda item during the meeting following government code five five one point zero four two. La reunión del Consilio de las Ciudades Socorro está por comenzar. Primeramente queremos darles las gracias y pedimos su paciencia durante estos momentos críticos que enfrentamos. Pavor de poner en silencio todo equipo electrónico para evitar interrupción de sonido. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial o revoltoso a quien nos siga estas reglas. Su llamada será desconectada y puede ser infraccionado. De acuerdo con sección cuatro uno ocho punto punto cero uno seis, el código del gobierno de Texas y por orden de la Oficina del Gobernador anunciado el dieciséis de marzo de dos mil veinte veinte, el Consilio de las Ciudades Socorros transmitirá la reunión hoy, dieciocho de junio de dos mil veinte veinte a las seis P M desde la sala del Consilio localizado en ocho sesenta Rio Vista Road, Socorro, Texas, por medio de teléfono y será transmitida en vivo para tomar medidas preventivas para prevenir la propagación de la enfermedad del virus corona COVID diecinueve a los demás y por la seguridad del público. El público y los presentadores serán anunciados por el oficial conduciendo la reunión para poder hablar durante la sección del comentario público o después de la discusión del artículo de la agenda por cual se apuntaron siguiendo las reglas del gobierno cinco cinco uno punto cero cuatro dos.
Six oh nine, the meeting is not postponed. Nuestro arte, would you please lead us in the political allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Iron number three, establishment of court.
Rene Rodriguez.
Here.
Cesar Nevares. Ralph Turan. Ralph Turan. Mayor Eli Garcia.
Here.
Victor Perez.
Here.
And Ivan Colombia loves.
Here.
Mayor, we have a court.
Iron number four, public comments.
Mayor, we have two speakers for this item. Our first speaker is Sal Chagoya.
Mister Chagoya.
Mister Chagoya.
Yes.
You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. So we're gonna hear a couple of proclamations being presented today. I wanna speak on one of them if I can. Proclamation on Black Lives Matters. Yeah, I wanna dissect a part of it where it says, "The problem, whereas the City of Socorro acknowledges your pain and we acknowledge the role we have played in creating the systemic injustices that have led to tragedies like this." So my question is, who is the "we" in the part of the proclamation? I know for a fact that I am not part of the "we" and I am part of the City of Socorro, so why am I being dragged into the mud in this proclamation? Mayor Garcia, can you confirm that the thirty-four thousand residents in Socorro have taken any part of the "we" in this proclamation? Mayor Garcia, can you confirm of city employees, city police, and city members of city council being part of the "we" in this proclamation? Members of council, raise your hands if you are taking part of the "we" in this proclamation. If you raise your hand, then you're the problem. And if you didn't raise your hand, then why is the language inserted as "we" in this proclamation? Mayor Garcia, your sole voice on the creation of this proclamation does not share or reflect the thirty-four thousand people in Socorro. If you are not a racist person, so why do we need to apologize? The second question that I have is how has the City of Socorro created a systemic injustice to people of black skin color? We are a minority city, people of brown color. A city council composed of minorities along with city employees made up of minorities along with the police department made up of minorities. So I don't recall a hate crime in the past or in the present reported here in Socorro. Chief Burton has been one of the best hires that has ever happened to Socorro. Under his leadership, he has flipped that police department and has made it a respectable department. I don't know how many black people we have in Socorro, but again, how has Socorro taken part of creating a systemic injustice to them? We have a police officer of color, yet I very doubt that Chief Burton has created a hostile work environment. So let's look at what really Black Lives Matter is. It was created back in twenty thirteen after the acquittal of George Zimmerman and Trey Smith, by the way, not a white male. What the L N stands for at the moment is to defund the police. That's what they really want. It's a democratic, uh, uh, it's a democratic, uh...
Mister Chagoya, your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jesse Montelongo.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Mister Montelongo, you have three minutes.
Hello? Yes, uh, you can you hear me?
Yes.
We hear you.
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on the other gentleman's comment and the Black Lives Matter. Um, we have a phenomenal police department. Uh, I personally have worked with them. Uh, you know, there needs to be more community involvement, not just by the police department, by the council members. Okay, I have not seen a lot of community involvement with the people of Socorro. I've had the police department out there at the cemetery cutting weeds with me, uh, running, uh, helping feed two hundred families this Saturday with a food drive, the lieutenant, Smith, uh, Chief Burton, they're involved with the community and they're getting, and they've always been there for, for me and for the Crime Watch group that I have, eighteen members, one retired marshal. Uh, I wish the city council members would get involved more with the public here because we don't have, uh, I know you all have jobs, you know, I got six jobs and I don't get paid for any of them. I volunteer and I'm on, I'm on the road all day long from sunup to sundown and everybody knows me. I'm in all the districts, I call in work orders, I call in potholes. That's stuff that you guys should do and take pride in your neighborhood. You guys need to step up. And I know you all are busy, but if, if I'm not, I have a family just like you all do, but you know what? I make the time. There's no excuse for not being involved with the community. And you are not going to understand what we need as a community if you're not out there looking, talking to people. You all need to talk to the people, not just two houses down. You all need to ride around your community. I've seen and I've already reported a lot of potholes, uh, roads that have been dug up and nobody knows why they were dug up, the residents don't know why, uh, their neighborhoods look like, like, uh, like Iraq being bombed. I mean, the, the roads are really bad. I've already, uh, forwarded this to the city manager, she's well aware of my concerns, but my concerns are the other people's concerns because I talk to them, I knock on doors, I talk to them. And, uh, the police have done a phenomenal job and they, they have, they have, the chief and, uh, Sergeant Kustic have gone out of their way to meet with me and the, the, uh, the, the Crime Watch community to see what we want. And you know what? I'm in the army and everybody's green, there is no black, brown, everybody's green, we're all the same color. And blue lives matter too, not just black lives, brown lives matter, white lives, all lives matter. And trying to defund the police department is, uh, for Socorro, Texas, it, it doesn't fit, the shoe does not fit, okay? So I don't, I don't think that's a good, uh, uh, we should not follow everybody else's, uh, uh, example because, uh, we have done a great job. I even know one of your officers, uh, Mister McKinney. He's a great officer, he's also a vet, a veteran, combat vet. And, uh, I have a lot of black friends and, uh, there has, there is no racism here in Socorro of any color because we are all one, we are all one.
Mister Montelongo, your time is up.
Thank you.
Mayor, those are all our speakers.
Iron number five, proclamation to lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, would you just read the, we don't need a motion, would you just please read the proclamation? And we do have a speaker for this item.
Should we let the speaker first, Mister Navarro?
Sal Chagoya.
Hello, yeah?
Go ahead, Mister Chagoya.
Hello? Okay. So this is another proclamation I couldn't get to right now, but, uh, if you read the proclamation, I guess the word queer is missing a couple of times in the proclamation, so I don't know that it should be inserted or not. But this is another one that kind of, you know, we just heard, there's no racism, there's nothing going on in that. We're not California, we're not New York. And I have gay friends and I have lesbian friends and I have never seen them being mistreated. But, you know, it's just like these proclamations are just being shoved to people that don't have those, uh, I guess, sexual identity or sexual orientation. And I just, I just feel that I'm, I don't need to be reminded that a proclamation makes everything okay because now you're gonna have to build proclamation on everything else. You're gonna have to build for Jews, you're gonna have to build for heterosexuals, you're gonna have to do one for Faber, for Black Month. Uh, so if you're gonna start doing this type of proclamation, you need to be across the board.
Thank you, Mister Chagoya. Go ahead, mayor.
Proclamation, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month. Whereas the City of Socorro is a welcoming community and an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, play, and raise a family. And whereas Socorro recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas the nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles and includes that every person has been treated equal, that each has rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of law. And whereas the City of Socorro's lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community are a vital part of all fields and professions and contribute to a stronger community. And whereas the City of Socorro is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its citizens and preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas Socorro is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our city. And whereas the Center for Disease Control recognizes that LGBT teens are at higher risk to be the victims of violence and have increased suicide rates. And whereas it is imperative that young people in the community, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. Now, therefore, I, Eli Garcia, mayor of the City of Socorro, Texas, and on behalf of the Socorro City Council hereby proclaim and recognize June two thousand twenty as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month. Has been approved this eighteenth day of June twenty twenty. Iron number six, proclamation to Black Lives Matter.
Mayor, we also have a speaker for this item.
Okay.
Sal Chagoya. Mister Chagoya.
Yeah?
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead and you can speak on number six.
Okay. So just what the L N was, I just wanna continue. They wanna defund a police department. Uh, I've just saw a tweet right now from Philadelphia, fourteen million have been diverted elsewhere. So the police just got defunded. Um, Brooklyn, New York, person shot Pennsylvania in Fulton, no police response. Brooklyn, male shot happened on Sheffield Avenue, police did not respond. Queens, person shot on one oh eight and one fifty-eight, no police response. Over twenty police officers calling sick today in Atlanta. Um, a tweet from, uh, Black Lives Matters D C, chop, chop, defund M T D, defund D C police. Atlanta, D C, uh, more than five hundred calls have not been answered. So the community is on their own and jurisdiction, police officers refuse, uh, to help out in Atlanta. So, and this is something, something that I don't believe in. There's a lot of stuff that, again, this is not California and this is not New York. And, and we, we gotta do something, start electing the right people because these Democrats are, are, are telling our cities and they're telling USA.
Mister Chagoya, your time is up.
Proclamation, Black Lives Matter. Whereas Socorro recognizes the importance of Black Lives Matter and whereas the City of Socorro condemns the death of George Floyd and the countless others who have come before him. Whereas the City of Socorro acknowledges your pain and we acknowledge the role we have played in creating the systematic injustices that have led to tragedies like thi, like this. And whereas the City of Socorro is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its citizens and preventing discrimination and bullying based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. And whereas Socorro is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our city. And whereas it is imperative that young people in the community, regardless on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. Now, therefore, I, Eli Garcia, mayor of the City of Socorro, Texas, and on behalf of the Socorro City Council hereby proclaim to be committed to listening and learning and will work collaboratively with our community to seek the change that we so desperately need. Has been approved this eighteenth day of June twenty twenty. Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion, Chairwoman.
It's consent, Mister, Mister Rodriguez.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on the, um, on the proclamation.
So did I.
Mister Martinez, we need to call back the item or we haven't really gone to consent?
No, you can proceed, there's never been, no, there's been no motion to consent.
Okay. Mister Rodriguez?
Yes, um, you know, uh, I'm gonna talk first on item five and then on six because that's the way we tackled them and I didn't wanna interrupt. Um, the gay and lesbian community, bisexual, transgender, queer, Pride Month. I get it and I understand, you know, like I said, you know, we all, we all have family members who are gay or bisexual or, or in that L G T B community, okay? I speak for myself. Um, and e, e, everybody has a different point of view. I, on the other hand, eh, I understand, you know, they go through stuff that we don't. They, they have a different kind of pressure that we don't. Um, and, and I understand that they feel boxed in sometimes and, uh, and they don't, they don't feel what we feel in a sense of the relikution or people talking behind their backs or, or just the discrimination. And I get it and I understand, you know, and, and I feel for that, that part of the community as, as well as of family members. Um, with that being said, I, I totally agree. And, and we should be open and welcoming and inviting not just the L G T B community, but everybody as a whole. You know, everybody as a whole is, is welcome here in Socorro and I wanna stress that out. Not just the L G T B community, but everybody. I don't care what their background is, we're welcoming. Um, as far as proclamation six, um, Black Lives Matter started, i, i, it had a good movement behind it. You know, I understand that there has been a lot of negativity, a lot of police brutality. But I'm a, I'm a, I'm a data guy and I know that the data doesn't reflect as at the horror that people are painting. Especially when there are some bad apples. It doesn't mean that the whole police department is rotten to the core. You know, uh, when we speak of systemic racism, you're including myself in there, us in there, including you, mayor. And I'll speak for myself, I am not racist at all. Just like we have, uh, L G T B members in, in my family, I'm pretty sure you all do, I have black friends. My family members have married, are in interracial relationships and marriage as well. So I have no, uh, racism whatsoever in my bone. I don't teach my kids that. Um, and I feel, uh, I just feel, uh, ashamed that, you know, we, we can't, um, we can't have our government and not my government as my local government. We're talking about Congress and the Senate, uh, getting, you know, uh, their books in order so that, you know, we can tackle this. Um, in our city, we have less than one percent that are African American. Less than one percent. The majority of our residents, and I'm gonna take this as including El Paso, Vinton, Clinton, all of the municipalities in the county, we're eighty-two percent, eighty, eighty-two percent Hispanic. Okay? Eighty-two. Fourteen to thirteen percent are Anglo, they're white. Two percent are black and then the other percentage that is left is all types of races. We don't have that systemic racism. We don't have that systemic racism that other cities do. We are totally different because we are in inviting people. We, we love one another, we, we, we enjoy functions out, you know, we don't have that. I, I, for one, don't believe that we should fund, defund the police department. That's something that as long as I'm here, and I'm pretty sure our council believe, feels the same way. We're not thinking or even having the discussion of defunding. I don't want people to be, you know, thinking, oh, Socorro's gonna defund, no, I won't accept that because we do need law and order. You know, um, like I said, we do have, uh, African American officers, you know, just like Hispanics and whites and stuff. We, we are very diverse community, we're very inviting and open. Like I said, Black Lives Matter, all lives matters as well, especially in this community because this community hasn't had any racism, you know? Um, like I said, you know, it, it, it's, it's something that, that, um, that is, is, is a hard pill to swallow that I know that just because of a few, the rest of the police department is, 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 is shrouded in, in, in darkness. And, and I feel for, for everybody. Nobody should feel fear when they get pulled over. You know, I know that here in Socorro, we, we are not like that, our police officers aren't like that. And we will continue to provide the best quality service for our residents and anybody that, that, that passes along. And that's what I want to stress out. I want to stress out that you need to understand, as, as our community, that we will, um, give the best quality training to our police officers so that they can do their work. And we are, I, for one, just me speaking, uh, won't even have that discussion about defunding our police. On the contrary, I'd probably give more money to the police. Um, but that's my two cents. Uh, Black Lives Matter, all of lives matter as well, just want to throw that out there, so thank you.
Ms. Alamos?
So, um, I think, um, I think, uh, what our, our constituent was talking about was the way it was worded, that you, we are implying that, uh, we're sorry we did this, we're sorry we're that. We proclaim that we, you know, that Black, Black Lives Matter. Is there a way of changing the, the wording and not implicating? Uh, I know I had nothing to do with it, I'm, I'm glad that you brought it, that it was brought, it needs to be brought, but can we change the wording? And that's my question. Miss Mayor or, uh, Mr. Martinez? Can you guys hear me?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Representative Collins, I was having trouble hearing you, can you say it again?
Right, I, and I think this gentleman brings a good point. I didn't even realize when it says we and the city of Socorro and, you know, we're implicating ourselves in something that we did not participate in, even though we want to recognize that black, all lives matter, not just black, all lives matter. And so, um, and to proclaim, you know, that we, uh, what did it say? If you could read it back, it says, I don't have it in here, but I did read where it says we, the city of Socorro, we this, um, council, or I lost, did I lose you guys? Are you guys there?
I am here.
Okay, sorry, I, I couldn't see you guys. Um, and I think we need to change the wording where it doesn't implicate that we actually did something, whether it was in the past or present or, or future.
I, I think my, to the extent it's on the agenda, I mean, it follows the same rules and procedures that the city has adopted for, for agenda formation for other items. Once it's on the agenda, I mean, whether or not it says we or I or, or accept certain people, council has the discretion to alter it, council has the discretion to delete it before it's read, council has the discretion to approve it if it wishes to do so.
Because if you notice, it says I, or Miss Mayor read, I, Mayor, and council. And I know that I wasn't counseled on this, but, um, and I, and I think this gentleman brings a good point, even though I believe in both causes.
Mister Perez?
Okay, but thank you very much, and, and this is, I'm hoping to make the, my two cents short, but nonetheless, I'm trying and make it as real as possible. I think we're missing the point in all this. It's not that they're, that we're taking responsibility for, for what happened in, in the seventeenth, eighteenth century. We're talking about how long this has persisted, okay? We're talking about that we understand and we are at, at the very least, at the very least emphasizing with our black brothers and sisters in, in what they have suffered, okay? I am not in the least bit afraid to say that we participated, but in terms of the greater society. It's not that I was personally responsible or you were or anybody else was in, in present time, but over the accumulation of hundreds of years, you know, it, it, it became systemic. And it's not saying that Socorro individually is, is responsible or took part in, in, in being, uh, racist or, or that, or any, or anything like that. It's that we as a society have, have created this system, have created this environment. And, and this is not just because, uh, Black Lives Matter is not a recent thing. It's been titled recently, but this is something that has been going on for decades, uh, centuries now, okay? And so it's just a matter of recognizing that at the very least, we all, Black lives too, have deserved simple dignity. And by the fact that we're saying Black Lives Matter, doesn't mean that we're not saying, uh, Latino lives don't matter or that Jewish lives don't matter, we're not saying that. It's just a simple recognition that we and our black brothers and sisters deserve the dignity to live and prosper and not be afraid whenever we're stopped by a police officer or whenever we enter, um, a store that we're being looked at, maybe because we're, we're going to, um, uh, be afraid of speeding it. That's what this is about. It's not about that I'm taking personal responsibility, we're not, we can't because this, this is something that has been voiding over for the, for centuries now. And I think that, um, the unfortunate and tragic case of Mister Floyd has finally, uh, popped the, the, the lid on this, on this, um, um, pressure cooker. And I think that this is the time, and if you've seen the Black Lives Matter, um, um, protests, with the great majority of them have been, have been peaceful. Um, and, and people in the black community are saying, we don't want that to have any of the, of the rioting. It, we, if there's still, a great many of them are saying, let's, let's, uh, follow the, the, the precepts and, and the teachings of Martin Luther King in, in, in peaceful protesting. And you know what? It seems to finally have done the job of, of grabbing the attention of the powers that be. And so, again, I apologize for, for monopolizing the time, but I think that, that we're just, we're just looking at this right here and it's not, that's not the case. We need to expand our view and understand and show that compassion and show that, um, empathy for our black brothers and sisters that have, have suffered for centuries. And it's not, it's not just a recent case, okay, it's not just recently. This has been, this has been happening and if we're saying we're sorry, it's not that we're saying sorry that I did it, no. We're saying we're sorry as a society for not having addressed this sooner. Thank you.
Mister Duran?
I have to agree one hundred percent with Mister, uh, with Victor, Mister Perez. Um, having lived in, in New Orleans, where this inner city is ninety percent black, Los Angeles, uh, I've seen a lot of racism. And like he said, this is not Socorro saying that we have racism, this is Socorro saying that we are against it. That is what all that this proclamation does, it says that we are against it, we will not tolerate it in our city. That's all it's saying, we're not taking responsibility for any actions. And I agree with Mister, Mister, uh, Perez one hundred percent, thank you.
I agree with Mister Perez, these proclamations were brought, um, not to divide, but to highlight that we in Socorro have been very lucky. We are very accepting of one another and we live in, in our city where we're friendly and we are able to breed our neighbors regardless of color or where they stand. And so these proclamations are to further those, those characteristics of the city of Socorro and to, to highlight that we are diverse and that we are accepting of everyone. Does anybody else have any other comments or can we move on to consent agenda? Ms. Alamos?
Thank you for the clarification, uh, and, and, and all means, I'm not against all, all this at all, at all. I just, um, I think, uh, sometimes we, and I, I agree with you, Mister Perez, a- as well. Uh, I have, you know, I did from the beginning. It's just, um, I think sometimes the wording, uh, misleads people and that's what I was trying to, uh, point to everybody that maybe if we would change the wording, it would, um, it would show our citizens, because if any other citizen reads it, aside from the gentleman that was speaking, um, I, you know, you're gonna have those that are gonna think like you and I and you're gonna have those that are gonna think like, like the gentleman that was speaking, that we're speaking for them. And, and I know that's not the case. So I want to thank all of you for your input and for saying, you know, what, what needed to be said, thank you.
Mister Nevarez?
All I'm gonna ask for is for us to listen carefully because this was completely misinterpreted, uh, and we just wasted a lot of time on this. It's listen, folks, and then comment as appropriate, that's all I have to say.
Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have already made the motion, no?
Mister Perez had already made a motion.
I'll second his motion then.
Brenner Rodriguez?
Aye.
Sister Nevarez?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes. Item number ten, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of track nine, Socorro branch, block seventeen, located at ten one four three Socorro Road from R one, single family residential to C one, light commercial to allow parking of semi trucks.
Mayor, we do have a speaker for this item.
Perfect, six forty-three, a public hearing is now open.
Sal Chagoya?
Yes, thank you. So, um, I think I'm reading that it's, it's, um, something that, uh, has been requested to be denied. Uh, we need to really, I know we've already had ordinances passed about parking and semi trucks. The only problem that I see is that worth the enforcement? I, I really don't see any enforcement going on in my community, I still continue to see semi trucks. Now we're having people come up to council and, and start asking for permission, uh, to continue these semi trucks. But, uh, you know, these semi trucks are, are busting our roads and, and they take too much space in, in our, in our community. And it's just something that, that, and I, I ask city council to really start talking to the city employees and, and start letting them know that they need to start enforcing what you guys pass as law. Thank you.
Mister Duran?
Uh, Mayor, it's a public comment.
Do we, do we have any other speakers?
No more speakers, Mayor.
Six forty-four, public hearing is now closed. Moving on to item number eleven, second reading and adoption of ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of track nine, Socorro branch, block seventeen, located at ten one forty-three Socorro Road from R one, single family residential to C one, light commercial to allow parking of semi trucks.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Mister, Mister Perez?
Um, yes, uh, if anyone's familiar with that area, it's not far from the Socorro, uh, cemetery, across the street, basically. And, um, it's across from the, I believe, the Mercantile, uh, it used to be the American Jeep on Socorro Road. And so they're really, uh, I, I, I don't understand why we would need to, why we want to do that as it is. Um, and I'll be very frank, there's, there's a distance there already, there's a, a car, uh, repair shop, which I'm not sure if it's completely a car repair shop or a holding facility for, for junk cars. Uh, uh, and I, at this point, I know I'm gonna just slip it off the agenda item, but that, I, I, if we were to have a, a parking area for, um, the semis, then you would also see it would have, uh, a pseudo junkyard right next to it. And so I don't think that this is, uh, stuff that we want to be promoting. Um, one, because, uh, to Mister Chagoya's, uh, point, we, i- it affects the, the roadway. And two, I think that because of the, it's a hiding traffic area, it increases the, the, the overall, um, safety or, or rather, it diminishes the safety of the area. So again, th- those are my two cents on, on this particular topic, thank you.
Mister Duran?
Uh, Socorro Road is a two-lane road. As it is, it is congested all the time. I have, I have to go down that road periodically and sometimes it's very hard to get out of your property. Add semi-traffic to that and you have a nightmare. Not only the fact that it's a two-lane road, people are gonna be trying to pass a semi truck on a two-lane road and it is inherently dangerous to do that. So to have, to bring in more semi-traffic, I, 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 I just can't, I can't see it. It's, it's, it's dangerous and it's gonna add to, um, to more congestion in the area. That's it.
Mister Rodriguez?
You know, I agree, it's a two-way lane and there is, um, there's a orthodontist, I believe, uh, about a, maybe a quarter of a mile east of this, of this place and right next to it, uh, some people unload, uh, vehicles that they bring. Uh, I don't know for what purpose and they stop, literally stop traffic for at least good twenty minutes so that that truck can go into that, that, um, that place. Um, it's, it's a nuisance. I think that, uh, at this point, this Socorro Road cannot sustain, uh, tractor-trailers on this road. I think that, uh, I'm, uh, Mister Perez is correct, we should deny. Um, and, um, if they want to operate, I think that they should go to Alameda or North Loop and stuff and, and, and try to, uh, your luck there. It's, it's a two-way lane, there's, there's no way.
Ms. Alamos?
No, I just wanted to, to comment on Mister, uh, Chavitas, or I'm sorry, Mister Chuk, what's his last name, I apologize.
Chagoya?
Chagoya.
Okay, Mister Chagoya, I, I seriously doubt that there's any council member here giving anyone, uh, permission to or, or, um, siding with the gentleman's, uh, request to allow the eighteen-wheelers there. Um, and if there, if it's, if there is, you need to report that uh, because none of us, uh, have the, um, authority to give permission without, um, just give permission, sir. Um, that's what I wanted to say, thank you.
Here, Perez?
Um, and unfortunately, um, as far as, I, I think that, um, uh, we, this is a little bit of a lesson for all of us in terms of the, um, uh, the monitoring of it. Uh, I know that, and, and I was talking to, uh, Minister Lefte on several occasions about, um, those kinds of things, about the tractor-trailers, the tractors or the semis being parked. Um, and I think that, uh, and I'm hoping that there will be a plan in place to maybe stagger the, 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 um, the inspectors or the, the, the ones that go out to, to look at these kinds of things so that, um, is, that we see the difference, what happens at different times of the day because if you go out during the day, of course, the rigs aren't gonna be there because they're being used if at night or that they're being parked. And so that's when the, the, um, the inspector should go out and, and, uh, and the, according for enforcement should go out and, and see exactly, um, who's parking what on the property. because that's when um you see the majority of of the uh, again, the the majority of the rigs parked in the in the private property or in residential property.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number twelve, public hearing for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of tract four B Socorro Grant Block twenty-seven from A one, agricultural to R one, single-family residential for a new development. Six fifty-one, public hearing is now open. Do we have any speakers signed up for this item, Ms. Navarro?
No, we don't, Mayor.
Six fifty-one, public hearing is now closed. Item number thirteen, second reading and adoption of ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of tract four B Socorro Grant Block twenty-seven from A one, agricultural to R one, single-family residential for a new development.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
Is there a presentation, Madam Mayor?
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, Joe de Rosas, planning and zoning department. Property is located off of Socorro Road. They're asking for a rezoning from agricultural to residential. This is right off of Silvia Road. This is behind the new development that's under construction, uh, close to Fryolin. And to clarify some of the concerns that some of the neighbors had is that nobody, none of the neighbors will will lose their home. Somebody mentioned that they were afraid they were gonna knock down their house. Uh, nobody will be affected by this development. They just, they're asking for a zoning change so they can subdivide this land.
We do have the owners on the line, if any, if any of the council members have questions.
Mr. Perez?
Uh, Joe, thank you. Do we have enough uh room for the required egress and ingress of of the, because now it's gonna be a subdivision, so um, do we have all the required, um, uh, me, not me, but all the requirements to say for uh egress and ingress, no?
Uh, no, so at the moment, Silvia Court is not wide enough and we did mention to the developer that once they bring the preliminary pack, there is a potential for council to ask for additional right-of-way. So they are aware that it might be required to uh indicate some right-of-way with that.
Madam Mayor, follow-up question?
Mr. Perez?
Uh, and Joe, um, in um, just just for my own uh benefit, is is the um usual setback for right-of-way still about ten feet?
Yeah, so it, well, it depends on if the utilities will be in the front. Uh, normally there'll be an easement, a ten-foot easement for utilities. Uh, in this particular case, it might be utilities in the front, including sewer and water. But uh, electrical lines might be running around a along the back. So we might need to acquire an additional fifteen or twenty feet depending on how much width we need on Silvia Court. And by doing that, uh, there's still enough setbacks to comply with a twenty-five foot in the front, twenty-five feet in the back.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Rodriguez, you're on mute.
Okay, do we know what type of development or is it just, um, oh, R ones? Um, our, never mind, that answered my question. I just wanted to see if we were gonna uh be able to have sidewalks and stuff like that when they uh build.
Well, that's another conversation that we had with a developer, uh, because if you look at the roadway, there are no sidewalks. We don't know if it'll be uh feasible to have sidewalks that are gonna end to nowhere. This is already front of this subdivision is already uh a developed area. So we we still need to see how they're gonna subdivide and determine if it's feasible to have sidewalks or curbs.
Okay, so my 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 second question, Mayor, is um, I don't understand if it's feasible for them. But when somebody wants to put a mobile home, we're forcing them to put a driveway, so why can't we tell them to put a sidewalk? That is the question. Okay, I've always said that our ordinances are antiquated and we need to fix them and this is the problem why. We're picking and choosing that what we want and what we don't want and what we can tell them and what we can't tell them. So those are the questions. If you're gonna develop it, you're gonna put all the necessities. It's not that it's going nowhere because we're building and we're actively putting sidewalks around our city. It takes millions upon millions of dollars to do all of the sidewalks that we are not budgeted for because we don't. We have a ten million dollar and like we said, if we've been working on the master plan sidewalks and it's like thirty million dollars. So our budget doesn't cover that, but you know what? We can start putting all these developments to start helping us uh uh doing that too. So it's not about, oh, it's feasible or not. Yes, it is and it's able to do it. That's just my question. And my two cents.
Mr. Duran?
Uh, this is exactly what Mr. Medina was talking about. When a new subdivision comes in, we require them to have sidewalks, curb and gutter. I mean, if we can, if we can, um, there's not any sidewalk going to nowhere. Eventually, the sidewalks will be built and then it will connect to the sidewalks here. And then when we get enough money or grants, we can put sidewalks on the other side of the street. But the builders are the ones, they're the ones that have put all these subdivisions in without sidewalks, curb and gutter. Now it's time that we have a unified city council to demand that from them or they don't get their subdivision, okay? Simple as that. We have the power to say, yes, you're gonna get your subdivision, but with the following recommendations. We need to have sidewalks, prepare for the future, not just live in the in the present. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Perez?
Uh, I agree. Um, the thing is that we're looking, we shouldn't, if we're, we should treat, if this is just a small development, that's fine, but we shouldn't treat it any 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 less differently than a than a regular development because um, the fact, as far as the, you know, the idea of having sidewalks in nowhere, well, that's not the issue. The issue is that we're being proactive in in setting up the the areas the way they should be. Again, because uh, we all know that our streets are are narrow to begin with, this is in my area. So I I am totally for um making the developer um uh comply with what is required of any other developer. Or, you know, because this is, this is um a a, this is becoming a subdivision. I can tell you when when I had, when I had my, when we got, we had our house built, the land that we had, that we purchased, that we acquired, needed to be subdivided because of the fact that it it's, and we had to give our present back and all the other things that that needed to be done. And it's like, it was only, it was only two lots. So I think that in this case, uh, we shouldn't treat people wanting to develop a a parcel of land any differently uh in terms of the requirements that the city, that that the city has so that we can be proactive in providing such things as uh a sidewalk and and it and widened street.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes, ma'am, I I'm having some technical glitches. Did Joe, can I ask Joe, Joe, did you say that sidewalks weren't feasible?
Well, I I mentioned that we still haven't seen the preliminary pack.
Right.
So once, once we see how, when we see how they're gonna subdivide, we're gonna see what they're proposing, see if this is what the city is looking for.
Right, and and Mayor Council, my my point is, and the reason I asked Joe is, and I I certainly understand the the council's concern with with sidewalks and and eventually all sorts of kinds of amenities, but we're not there yet. All all the the agenda that's before you is just a zoning change. That's all it is from one classification to the other. What amenities come in and what's constructed and how, that's at the planning stage at the earliest. Um, I will tell you honestly, the Joe and Mike know a lot more about the the substance of of what's required for amenities in a subdivision. All I would caution is, whatever those requirements are, they exist now. They're in our subdivision ordinance, they're in our other ordinances. And I don't know when this owner purchased the land. Whenever he, he or she or it purchased the land, it though the rights that the owner has in that land and the duties he would have to improve it if he wishes to do so are controlled by whatever subdivision and other ordinances were in effect at that time. So it may be the current ordinance, it may be a very old ordinance, depending on when it was acquired.
Ms. Alamos?
Well, I, right now they're just requesting a change, so it's really pointless to say anything.
Mr. Perez?
Um, I I I need to clarify because I I think that we were, this is a, after the collective frustration that we have as a council about about the the developments that that have surfaced uh over the years, okay? That's one. Two, um, and and I don't know, Mr. Martinez, uh, I I just, I I have a hard time processing that if if the, if somebody, if they bought this parcel of land uh and it and the back of it works very much undeveloped, then at the, at the point where they're trying to to uh rezonate for an R one, then don't they have to comply with all, none, none of it is grandfathered because it it is a a new development? So it it would, it would, to me, it would stand to reason that they have to comply with the whatever current regulations we have. If it was a, you know, an old house that had been built back in whenever, you know, I think that's a different story, but now that we're saying this is going to be a new development, now again, this is my 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 take, that it would be under uh the 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 new requirements the city has for uh encodes and those kinds of things. Yes, I know that we're, that we're speaking ahead of the of the actual plat or whatever, but I think that we need to make sure that we're very clear as a city what the expectations are going to be once they proceed with it. And I think that that it, even though that we're not there yet, to your point, I think that it bears um, it bears um saying so that as as the saying goes in Spanish, sin aviv snowing down, or something like that, you know, everybody knows what they're getting into.
Mr. Medina?
Can I add something else, Mr. Medina? Okay. Uh, what I wanted to communicate to to the body is that, do you remember that although we have the ordinances in place and we would actually exact this as a condition because we have a master sidewalk plan now? And the whole intent there is to move the city in a progressive manner. So uh regardless of the situation that we may have here, where there may be an interpretation or misinterpretation of some language, uh, when they go through the actual planning processes, I I would certainly recommend and would adhere that the purposes of us having ordinances and even if they may be antiquated is that we do have programs, we do have plans in place that speak in lieu of or represent the attitude or the need of the city. So in short, is that we would use these mechanisms to move forward the sidewalks that the city needs ultimately.
Did we lose him?
Uh, that's all I have. Did everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Alamos, go ahead.
So I, I guess my question is, when uh, when these developers uh come in and try to change the zoning, are they explained, or do they, do you guys explain to them, you know, this is the process and this is what, you know, if you do change it, this is what's gonna require from you? Or you just say, yes, we can change it, we have to take it to council, sign this document? How does that work?
So when they stop by our office and they uh present the original application, we give them a timeline, what to expect, to include what is gonna be required when they submit the packs. Uh, that's the first thing that we did mention to them. Uh, we're gonna require everything that comes together with a subdivision, including sidewalks, uh, stormwater, windy areas, rock walls and might even uh have to pay park fees, et cetera. Uh, they were made aware of that ahead of time. Um, or they decided to go ahead and apply. However, they are um, they were in disagreement on some of the things that we were asking from them. And when they come with a subdivision, that's something that they might present to you. So that's why I did mention that it it depends on when we see the pack. Um, it's gonna be a discussion we're gonna have with them.
One, and one more question. Do we know what size of lot, uh lots they are proposing, will be proposing?
They're asking for a minimum of ten thousand square feet per lot. Uh, they will be able to accommodate approximately ten lots in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Moving on to item number fourteen. Discussion and action on an order scheduling a uniform election to be held in the city of Socorro, Texas on Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty, for the purpose of electing city city council members, mayor at large, representative and district four representatives.
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor, we have a speaker for this item? Miriam Cruz? Ms. Cruz?
Hello?
Go ahead, Ms. Cruz.
Oh, thank you. I had a question. Um, I was wondering why it didn't mention the charter? I guess I'm just wondering if that doesn't need to be included or if it is missing or if you guys had decided um to not include it in this coming November election? That's that's that was my, my only question in regards to this item. Thank you.
Ms. Alamos?
Yes, uh, Ms. uh, Rodarte, to answer Mrs. uh, Ms. Cruz's uh comment? Is that coming later?
Yes, ma'am, we actually received uh word from the election department that we do need to have them in by August. So we're gonna talk about that in the charter amendment section. I don't know if Jim, you can answer, does it need to be included into this order?
Yes, ma'am, I can and no, it doesn't. Typically, for the charter election, you would actually pass a separate ordinance for that and an ordinance with a with a charter for the election and the ballot language. And I'll I'll find the memo shortly, but my memory is that the due date for that is August seventeen.
Thank you for the clarification.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colomilla Lobos?
Yes.
Item number fifteen, discussion and action to either continue with the city of Socorro's previously submitted grant application to the US DOJ's Bureau of Justice Assistance Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program, or approve joining Al Paso County's grant application to the same fund.
I'll make a motion to submit our grant application. The reason being is because when we submitted the grant application, it says that we could do it and it's a first come, first served basis. And look at what's happening with the county. You know, we're having an issue where they wanna give us fifteen dollars per capita and yet Governor Greg Abbott, uh, gave a, uh, a, a, a letter and a statement saying that, you know, the, the figures are fifty-five per capita. Uh, so the county took it upon themselves to just give us, you know, pennies in the nickel. So if we do this grant with them, what's gonna say that all that funding is gonna, eh, what happens to that funding? Are we gonna receive it all, or they're gonna take it and do something on their own? And those are the issues that I have, is that we have worked very well with the county for many years. Uh, we restored, you know, the, uh, Socorro credibility and, and, and we amended all of these uh, broken relationships that Socorro had prior to two thousand and thirteen. But, you know, it, it, something happening where, where, um, it, it, it's just, I, I believe that we should just keep it on ourselves.
Do we have a second before we continue?
Second.
Mr. Perez?
Uh, I'd rather, and I agree with Mr. Rodríguez, I'd rather take our chance on getting, on doing the application on our own than to, uh, join a group or whomever it is with the county and then start, uh, trying to see who's gonna, how is it gonna be divvied up? And, and so, no, I, I'd rather go by, you know, uh, go, eh, go it alone, so to speak, as, as, as a city eh, as an entity, and see what, uh, try, try our, our best in, 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 uh, recouping funds that, or acquiring funds that way.
Um, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Alejandro Valdés, Grants Coordinator. I just, uh, did wanna point out that this application has already been submitted to the Office of the Governors. Um, and it was approved by our city council via resolution. So we would need your approval to withdraw the application that we've already submitted. Um, that application is included in your backup. The county has provided a breakdown for how the funds, uh, will be allocated to each local municipality. And we would receive a little bit more funding. Um, but there is a trade-off. Um, we would lose a little bit of flexibility in terms of, um, managing our budget ourselves and also on the administration of the grant. Um, so that, that also needs to be considered as well. I don't know if you have any further questions.
Mr. Perez?
Very quickly, thank you, and, and, and again, I, I think that, um, and I, I apologize, I'm very chatty today. Um, that it seems like, um, we're, another layer of bureaucracy is gonna be added once, i- if, if we go, uh, it, with our in route or with the, the county. Um, eh, I'd rather that, again, take our chances, with what we, we may receive. Eh, eh, and, and I guess maybe the, the idea is, uh, to keep, the, the motion would be to to not withdraw, uh, our, our, uh, our grant application, if I hear Ms. Valdés correctly.
That's correct.
Mr. Rodríguez?
Um, I agree. Um, so I would amend my motion to keep, um, uh, our grant application that we already submitted, so that, you know, we won't move forward with the, with the county. It's very important. Um, it doesn't matter if we get a million dollars extra, as long, um, what they're saying is that we're not gonna be able to administer it, we're not gonna be able to have any input or say on, 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 on the project. I mean, it's basically, we get it, but we're gonna do it, and then we're gonna hand the reins over to the county. So it's just another layer like, like Mr. Perez said. Um, I don't like it. I think that we have been doing good. We have this adequate staff that is knowledgeable, that, that has done all these projects, and I think we can just do it on ourselves.
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colomilla Lobos?
Yes.
Item number sixteen, discussion and action on approving an application to continue participation with the Defense Logistics Agency Disposition Services. This is the law enforcement office program where the department is able to obtain authorized equipment from the government for use with the department.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mayor, you're on mute.
And we do have two speakers on this item. Sal Chagoya? Mr. Chagoya? Go ahead, Mr. Chagoya.
Yes, so, so this is a good program. Um, twenty-two years of military service, retired, uh, logistics, uh, some are familiar with this program. So this, this program will benefit our police department, basically what they are, they're kind of, uh, uh, equipment that has been used, or sometimes they overstock, and they just hand them down to, uh, you know, police departments in need. So that will help us with the cost. I just wanna make sure that we support this because this is something that is also being looked at in, in other, uh, you know, blue states, Democrat states, uh, California, New York, where they're asking police departments not to be getting this type of equipment because it's considered militarized and it's not friendly for the community. But in this case, I do believe that this is a good service. This is something that will benefit and can help our local police department. So I would like to see, uh, the council, um, not go through the emotions of what other states are doing, but to really look at what's going on here and, uh, here locally in Socorro.
Thank you, Mr. Chagoya. Miriam Cruz? Ms. Cruz?
Thank you, Ms. Navarro.
Go ahead.
Thank, yes, hi, thank you. I, I actually used to support, uh, a lot of this before, for the exact same reasons that Mr. Chowey, uh, Chowey just said. Um, you know, if it can save the city some money. Truth is though, that some of this equipment, we do have to look at what, what, if it's actually being used, if it's being used enough, because it's not like we're getting it scot-free. And so we are still spending resources on it. Um, if it's certain type of equipment, I'm sure there's even training that has to go into it. And, and I do worry about actually spending some money on something that we don't need, especially because it is coming from a federal agency. And so if, you know, if someone wants to call it militarized, or maybe just using the word, uh, you know, that it's something that's, it's not gonna get used in a small town, um, like El Serio Socorro, um, but there would be no need for it, but we're still gonna be spending our money on it just because it's a good deal. That, that, that just doesn't seem like a good, uh, use of our resources. Um, and so I'm sure that Chief Burton will make those decisions adequately, but I, I would just hate to continue to see, um, things, uh, that the city buys that are not really working towards, uh, helping our community in the best way that it can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, uh, David Burton, Chief of Police. So let me just, uh, this is a program that's one year old now for us. Uh, we started this when it first got here, uh, because there was some equipment that we needed that I was looking at that, uh, I felt that the city couldn't afford. Um, and since then, we have appropriated, uh, some equipment from the Defense Logistics Agency, which is where all of the government, uh, equipment gets sent as a clearinghouse. So let me just, uh, go over the list of what we have so far. Uh, so we have two generators, uh, that we've applied for. One is a small one that's portable, uh, actually applied for and received. Uh, two generators. One is a small one that we can use, uh, to plug into a building, uh, and move it around. Uh, the second one is a larger one for the purposes of powering, uh, the emergency operations center. And obviously with the new building, uh, that became the police department. Uh, so we have a, a very large generator, uh, thirty KW, uh, which can power that building now. So those are two of the things. Uh, we also have a high water rescue vehicle, uh, because I've been informed, uh, but I haven't seen it firsthand of the, um, severe flooding that you've experienced in the past. Uh, so I felt it was important that we get, uh, a vehicle that can, uh, evacuate residents if we need to. We have used it once so far. Um, that was, uh, when a, a road was washed out with some of the rain that we had, uh, over the winter and we needed to get a medical crew in, uh, and the ambulance could not get there. So we did use, uh, our truck, it's a truck, um, that's, uh, it can go through three feet of water, uh, so we did use that. And then the last thing that we ha, oh, not the last thing, uh, the one, next one that we have is a utility vehicle because, uh, we do run the, um, Stone Garden and, um, Border Star, uh, patrols. Uh, unfortunately, most of those are on, are rough terrain. Uh, so I did get a, a Hummer, which is a utility vehicle, it's a pickup truck actually style that we got. And that's, uh, to save wear and tear on the police units, uh, because we were, uh, experiencing a lot of repair and tire replacements, uh, on those vehicles because of the rough terrain. Were required to run a certain amount of patrol distances on those surfaces, uh, and that was tearing up our vehicles. So I, I figured that we'd get a utility vehicle instead of that. And then the last thing that we did is we just recently acquired a tactical vehicle. Uh, it is an armored vehicle, uh, that is solely for the use of our ERT team. Um, that has two purposes only. Uh, the first one is to deploy the team safely into an area that we would need to do that. And the second purpose is to do a rescue. So if we were to have a individual, uh, that was brought up in a violent type crime where, uh, the potential firearms existed and/or actively being used, uh, we could go in and get that individual, uh, in some safety, relative safety because of the vehicle type that we had. And that's what we have so far. Uh, in the future, what I've had, uh, one of my lieutenants is the admin for this, I can tell you what I've, I've gotten looking for now. Uh, one is a light tower, uh, so we can use it at crime scenes, it lights up the area for us. The second one is construction equipment, uh, because the military does, and, and the government, they do have such things as plywood, sheet rock, paint, uh, construction equipment that I felt that we could use if we needed to add on to, uh, the police department building. And then the third one would be another modular classroom. Uh, we did have the opportunity to look at a very large, uh, modular building last year. We're in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, but at the time we could not afford the shipping price on it. So I've got the lieutenant looking for a smaller building, again, that we can use as, uh, an add-on to the police department for training purposes and/or, uh, we can turn it into a holding facility. But that's what we have so far.
Mr. Duran?
Yeah, the, the equipment we're getting is not, uh, if it is militarized, I mean, we're not getting tanks, we're not getting, um, vehicles that are gonna be used for, um, aggressive type, uh, actions. We're getting vehicles, like the chief said, that can go into a high water rescue. We're getting vehicles that if they're at a shooting, that they can go in there and re- retrieve wounded officer. Because, okay, it is highly armored. Okay, well, if somebody's shooting at you, you don't wanna go in there with one of our patrol cars. So this type of program, uh, gets us that equipment at a fraction of the cost of what we would have to spend to get it otherwise. So I don't see a problem with, um, getting this type of equipment at all.
Mr. Rodríguez?
Uh, you know, I agree with Mr. Duran, you know, all we wanna, all we want the community to know is rest assured that we're getting what we need to provide defense quality service for our residents. That's it. If you don't set it out, we're not going out for a tank or a bazooka or, uh, you know, uh, uh, a, a, a jet. We're not doing that. We're getting stuff that we're going to provide a better quality of service for our residents. That is it. We're being frugal with, with our expenses. Uh, chief is, has been doing good. He's look, he's, he's always brought us things that we need, but that we can provide a better service. That's it. Rest assured that we will continue to do, do that.
Ms. Yelavos?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm not sure where this information's coming from, you know, that, uh, we're, we're not spending our money wisely and all that good stuff. Um, but I, I think it's, um, I, I think our morals and, and our education and is being questioned every time we are attacked this way. And I personally would love to sit down with anyone and, and show them what these, uh, uh, supplies and equipment are being used for. Um, because there's other people that actually view these videos afterwards. And it just creates a very negative, negative, uh, vibe in our city when I've spent the last three years and a half trying to change the mentality in Socorro. So I would appreciate it if this information doesn't get thrown out there loosely, but actually do your homework before you come out here and attack and waste time. Thank you.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colomilla Lobos?
Yes.
Item number seventeen, discussion and action on approving a memorandum of understanding with the Socorro Independent School District.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Afternoon again, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, Chief Burton for the Police Department. So this is a minimal impact, um, MOU for us. Uh, SISD, uh, does not have their own crime computer. Those are FBI-controlled devices, they require certain certifications, uh, licensing to occur. Um, occasionally they ask us to run, uh, data for them. Um, eh, I think we're talking maybe thirty to forty times a year that occurs. Eh, it's minimal time and it, it provides the, uh, data that they're looking at. We are allowed to share it, uh, because it's going from one police department to another. Uh, but we have the only local, uh, besides, uh, the other law enforcement agencies, we have the, uh, local, uh, crime computer in our, uh, dispatch center and that's the information that they're seeking, uh, the information from.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colomilla Lobos?
Yes.
Item number eighteen, discussion and action on the plat approval for a Mendilín subdivision being all of block seven and block twelve Socorro grants located at eleven four oh eight Haney Road for a lot split.
Motion to approve or discussion?
Second.
Second, Mayor and Council, this is an application for a lot split. Property is located on Asmor. We're trying to subdivide the property in two for the purpose of building, uh, a second house. Owner already has a house on part of the lot. We wanna split it in the middle, so they can build a second house on the northern part. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Perez?
Uh, uh, yes, uh, thank you. Um, so then, again, they, they go ahead and they, excuse me. They are, they do meet and, uh, or they will have the, the enough room for the ingress and the ingress and all those things that go with, with, uh, having a. or they will have the such, the enough room for the ingress and the ingress and all those things that go with, with uh having a, a house built.
Yes, sir, that is correct. They will have enough, uh as you can see, this is the way they wanna subdivide, this is the final plat. Uh, one side will have access to Passmore, the other one will have access to Haney. And then lot two will have access directly to Haney.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Nesealos?
I just, um, you know, the, the access to uh Passmore, we have several issues there with Passmore. No sidewalks, they're aware of all this, right? Um, again, there's no sidewalks, we've had fences torn, you know, from speeders, et cetera, et cetera. Or I just want them to be aware, it, it become, it's become a problem there uh at times with speeders and no sidewalks.
So what you see on the screen here, this is a preliminary plat. And there are no sidewalks, there is driveways that were installed by the city back a few years ago. And there's no right-of-way required to be dedicated because they're following the same property lines that already exist, according to the Socorro Grant survey. Well, they're not changing the boundaries outside. They're only proposing to subdivide the property in half. And the owner of both uh lots would, would still be Mr. Mendeville. It's Maria Mendeville.
And he is on the line if you all have any questions.
This is Daniel Mendeville, uh, and if anybody has a question?
Rene Rodriguez?
Yeah, I'm unmuted, but I don't know.
Mr. Mendeville, um, I don't believe anybody has any questions, we're about to take the vote on your item. Thank you for uh being available to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Rene Rodriguez?
Okay, I, I don't wanna talk over anybody. I.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number nineteen, report on Ciro del Mar, unit two subdivision. If we could have, if anybody would entertain a motion to delete this item, there was a mistake on the name of the subdivision and we'll go ahead and bring it back at the next meeting.
Make a motion.
Motion, please.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent?
I, no, I'm here, I'm here. I'm here, I, I, I just need to turn off, the alarm is talking to me, that's why.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty, report on Varela Drive.
Mayor and council, this is uh Mike Neen again. Uh, so, one of the, the directives that the city council has given us is to explore the, the possibility of bringing back a project development uh for V- Varela Drive. Uh, what we are doing in the preliminary component of identifying all properties and owners is that I'm here to report to you that we have discovered that one of the property owners does owe taxes. Uh, the taxes that are, before you are in, in the ballpark of about twelve hundred thousand dollars. Uh, in looking at the tax record uh of this property, it would appear that the owner has a growing debt. So essentially is that he will not pay uh for several years across time. Uh, the first one that he did identify was about six thousand dollars. Then he came back and he paid that and then uh what we understand from the central appraisal district numbers is that he owes taxes for twenty eighteen, nineteen, and this year as well. So as a ongoing effort of keeping the council uh abreast of what the department is doing in terms of the roadway, this is where we're at. And so, uh, I guess short of the individual not paying the taxes at this point in time, uh, it would not be recommended by uh, you know, staff to move forward until the taxes are, are up to par. So this is the, the same example that we have expressed before by way of armed speech.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Okay, uh, my question, now my question is, don't we have a company that looks at, at delinquent taxes and see if we can do about that? Because this is an ongoing issue across the city and we need to find a solution for this. Um, I know that this is, this is something that came up because we, we took a proactive uh, uh, uh stand and tried to, you know, provide a, a service to these individuals. But um throughout the city, um, there are other people that owe taxes as well. So what are we doing about that? And if we can, we should. And um, and then we'll, we'll um, we'll have to see if uh that individual does pay their taxes so we can move forward on this project.
Right, Mr. Rodriguez, so I, I think at this point, you know, if I understand correctly, we will look at any types of assets that we have to, to move this project forward and we can certainly come back and report that.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have a speaker for this item? Sal Chagoya?
Yes, so, uh, Ms. Val Lobos, uh, I'm gonna correct myself. When I was speaking about an employee, I wanna say the city manager. So, this is something that I believe the city manager needs to be looking at. Uh, delinquency on property, taxes, uh because we have a lot of properties in Socorro. And when I heard the video on Varela Drive, that it had been for a couple of years that taxes have been paid. I mean, this is something that, i- it's a cancer, it's a cancer within Socorro. I have reported a couple of uh empty lot properties and, and it's the same thing. Uh, taxes are not being, are not being uh paid. So what I believe the city needs to do is actually put a tax link and, and sell it in an option or, or, or get rid of it, because if we just keep on giving the opportunity to people to catch up on their taxes and this is exactly why we'll never have suburbs in Socorro. Because we have a lot of people here that don't live in Socorro, they're from out of town. And, and they just let that tax grow. And this is not just one property, this is one of many. And I have reported some properties to the city manager. And, and that's why, you know, I, I really do believe the council needs to start making, in this case, the city manager accountable and making sure that
Mr. Chagoya, your time is up. Nesealos?
Mr. Martinez, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a due process to, to all this by the county, right? For delinquencies?
Say that, say that again, please? With the, the city of El Paso and its tax collection firm, it has, it's had the same law firm doing its delinquent tax collection for, say, go over twenty years now?
And I'm sorry, so is, is there anything our city manager or ourselves can do to escalate? Because I agree with the constituent, I mean, I myself have reported, I have driven street by street in my district and know of many properties that are dilapidated and uh so when I research them, taxes are not being paid. Uh, they're delinquent. It, is there anything that we can do collaboratively, we send a letter in, or you write a letter in our behalf?
I, I, I don't mind, I mean, the, I know, I haven't answered your question, I might answer it, but I'm worried that we're beering off that we're not posted for a general discussion of tax collection, delinquencies and procedures and options. Because the item on the agenda is the Varela, is a report on Varela Drive. My, my suggestion would be if you wanna have any further deliberation or discussion, delinquent tax collection is to post an item on the agenda at the next meeting that addresses that specifically.
That would be, that would be great, thank you.
Mayor, this was just a report.
Item number twenty-one, discussion and action to approve two letters of support uh for El Paso's county, county's grant application to economic development administration for broadband feasibility plan and the comprehensive strategic plan.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry. Good afternoon, mayor and council, Alejandro Liz Grants Coordinator. Um, the county, El Paso County did approach the city requesting two letters of support for their grant application to the Economic Development Administration. Um, they were proposing two projects. One was a countywide broadband study to determine if there are pockets in the county that do not have adequate uh broadband uh service and accessibility. And the other one was to put together a countywide comprehensive plan that puts together all of our different um master plans into one document to make it more comprehensive. So these were, these were good projects, they approached us for a letter of support. We provided those letters of support to the county and we are now here um requesting you to rat- ratify those two letters of support. Um, however, there has been an update uh from the county. This, these two grant applications um were going to be uh funded, the match was going to be funded by the county. Um, and so through the discussion and our request for CARES Act funding, um, now they have shifted these two program, programs to the smaller municipalities. So now the city of Socorro would have to submit its own comprehensive plan um application to the EDA and its own broadband study, coverage study to the EDA. Um, just to let you know, we did have a meeting this past Wednesday with uh county administrators. They did inform us that they will request the county commissioner's um court to approve an allocation for the smaller municipalities in El Paso County um at the fifty-five dollar per capita rate that has been approved by um Governor Abbott. So they're gonna follow the same mo- model that Governor Abbott proposed. And because they are now providing the ci- city of Socorro a maximum allocation of approximately one point eight, almost one point nine million dollars, um, they have decided to shift these two programs to the local municipalities. So now we can apply for those funds on our own. I, I'm not sure if you have any questions.
Nesealos? Does this mean that it would require for us to hire an independent um surveyor for um the services?
Um, so this is just a study, it would be just a grant application. And so if we submitted the grant application on our own, then we would have the funds to contract, uh, yes, a, a person to conduct the study for us.
Okay.
Mr. Rata?
Yes, ma'am, I wanna clarify that Wednesday's meeting, uh, they did express that if the city is looking to do it with the county, that they're open to that. We would just have to express that. I think for these two items, we do suggest that we do um partner up with the county just because we wanna have a feasibility study for the whole county, not individual municipalities. Uh, so I think for these two, we would ask further support and see if we can partner up with them. That's my recommendation to council today.
Nesealos?
So if we were to vote on this item and it would pass, then uh the recommendation would be to unite as, correct? Am I correct?
Correct, as, as it is posted.
Okay.
Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, discussion and action to amend the city of Socorro's major thoroughfare plan to include the Nuevo Weco Tanks extension as a priority roadway project.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, mayor and council, Adriana Rata, the city manager. Uh, the reason that this item is placed on the agenda is just that the Nuevo Weco Tanks, Tanks extension wasn't part of our ma- major thoroughfare plan, which uh our city planner is recommending that we add it to our thoroughfare plan. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Mike?
Uh, yes, I do, uh, so what I wanted to do is, is give a, a brief background of some of the coordinated efforts that have been done either by the El Paso Metropolitan Planning Organization uh and also our local district of Texotl. So, uh, as we understand it right now, in the El Paso MPO planning document, uh, the extension project is a project of a much larger project that initially it's extended from I-ten all the way down to the new, sort of the setup port of entry by way of Nuevo Weco Tank, uh Moon Road, uh and also through Wind uh Road as well. And so in the regional plan, we do have it uh for construction. Um, and then you have also uh given us direction to move the project uh through the MPO for uh preliminary engineering study along with the construction. Uh, moreover, and I think more importantly here is that Texotl a couple of years ago also did what's called a planning and environmental linkage study. And what this does is that it allows for the local MPO, the district, and the municipalities to do a abbreviated environmental document. So essentially is that Texotl and then the partnership, they go out there and they look for any type of environmental concerns and report that back. And so at the end is that we're able to claim a benefit, you know, by way of reducing the environmental component when we're doing these very sophisticated projects. Uh, so once I went back to re- re-review the master thoroughfare plan, we do have it by way of the expansion of Moon Road. But since then is that this is a complete and independent utility from any other roadway that we have. So I think it, it's, it's important for us to, to make that claim as a priority project in our major thoroughfare plan.
Mayor, we do have a speaker for this item? Sal Chagoya?
Yes, I saw this and this is absolutely great. Uh, I think it would uh help us alleviate with, with uh the traffic uh which um Nuevo Weco Tanks has, has done that a lot. But as uh the city continues to grow, uh these roadways will, will benefit um Socorro in, in regards to its infrastructure. The only concern that I would have is that the maintenance. Uh, I have uh brought up a couple of concerns about Nuevo Weco Tanks in, in the upkeeping of, of the roads and having them clean and the bike roads and, and you know, so again, this is something that the city manager needs to look at. I've brought it up before. And if uh, if we continue to grow and get all these roads, we just gotta have that in mind. We need to keep them up to par, uh especially, you know, because uh the, the funding when it comes to uh the roads and sidewalks, we're seeing that it, it costs uh pretty good money, but, you know, uh, we just gotta make sure that we're, that we, we do the upkeeping uh here in Socorro for, for these additional roads or plants that are coming up in Socorro.
Thank you, Mr. Chagoya. Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-three, discussion and action to have a standing order that all Socorro Police Department officers must intervene whenever a fellow officer is using excessive force, duty to intervene.
Motion to approve or discussion?
Second. Mr. Duran?
Uh, Mayor, the reason I brought this item is what we've been seeing on TV over and over and over again. It happened with Mr. Floyd, we had one officer who's clearly not doing his job by putting his knee in Mr. Floyd's neck for over eight and a half minutes. And three other officers sat there and watched, probably knowing that what he was doing was wrong. We need to give our officers the, the opportunity to say, hey, we're not going to be a part of this. This is wrong. Not go along with the old, I'm going to back up my partner. Because now everybody has a camera. Everybody's watching and everybody is recording. So we need to give our officers that opportunity to be able to say enough. What you're doing is illegal. And give, and make it a duty that they have to stop the officer from doing what he's doing. Next.
Mr. Perez?
I agree with Mr. Duran's sentiment, but the only thing that I see, what I see here though, we're kind of treading on micromanaging the police department in the sense that they all have, they all have, they take in a note. And I think the chief is very well aware of the, of the fact of what he needs to do. Uh, I'm not saying, you know, uh, again, I, I completely agree with Mr. Duran's sentiment, but I think that we need to give the chief his, his rightful place in, in making sure that he runs the department in the most efficient and most humane possible way. And so again, I, I agree with the sentiment, but I'm not sure that we should start mandating these kinds of things only because it, 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 it treads a fine line of micromanaging and it's something that I, from, only from that standpoint, that I, I don't feel comfortable with. That's, that's the only thing. I agree with the sentiment, but I think that we need to allow the chief to, to start building those rules and regulations within the department in terms of behavior and, and or continue, and continue to improve on it, because they're doing a good job now.
Mayor, could I, Mayor, could I talk?
Go ahead, Chief.
Chief, Chief, can you say it real quick, please?
Okay.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Okay. When, when the situation with Mr. Floyd happened, it, it was a, a, a tragedy. We, we, first of all, I know that we all have the same sentiments as to say, you know what, that shouldn't happen. I took the liberty to talk to Ms. Doran, the chief, and I said, hey, this is something that's concerning. And one of the things that our chief also said is that he, he's going to look at the department and then roll out some of the, the things that he thinks and feels that he needs to bring up. I also believe that, that he's doing a great job so far. And I think that there's always room for improvements. Mr. Duran, I know where your heart's at, I feel you, I understand, I agree with you, but also I agree with, with Mr. Perez. You know, we don't want to micromanage this department just because we want to push the narrative of the nation. Because I do believe that we are not like the rest of the country. We are a loving and open community. And, and, and I think that we should, we should allow for our chief to bring up. The thing that he also addressed with me and Ms. Doran is that for the civil service, he, he's been waiting for the civil service to come up with, with the approval of what he already presented them with new rules and procedures. And he's said that it's been there sitting for eight months because they have to review it because it's a lot. So it's one of those things that if we're going to add more to that, I think that the chief knows what's in it. We don't. Once our, our, our commission makes a ruling, they're going to bring it up to us and then we'll, we'll, we'll tackle it. But I think that we shouldn't micromanage. But I understand, Mr. Duran, I, I, I'm backing you too. But I, I agree with Mr. Perez in this one that we shouldn't, you know, micromanage because we are treading in, you know, a little bit of
Chief Burton?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. So as you know, I'm not one that waits around for things. If I see something, I address it immediately. I don't believe in, in doing something that can be done to correct or improve the police department. So I've already done this. The first thing I did is look at the way that the policy was written. We, it was a little vague in that it mentioned constitutionality as far as that we should not interfere with the constitutionality of our citizens. Now, as a police chief, I cannot rewrite policies that are present without civil service or council approval. But what I can do is write standing orders when the policy is vague or does not speak to it. And in this case, it did not specifically mention the duty to intervene. So I wrote a standing order that was effective last week and it places three obligations on the Socorro police officers. The first one is a duty to intervene in the face of excessive force. The second one is a duty to intervene in the face of de-escalation when they recognize an officer is not doing that. And the third one is to render aid when it is noticeable to the officer or is there is verbal distress and a request for aid from a individual that we are dealing with, providing that that officer has the capability and training to provide that aid immediately and/or then we would notify EMS. So those are the areas that I addressed in a standing, in a standing order for the duty under the general heading of PD-10 to me.
Ms. Alavas?
So, um, I, I, I agree with Mr. Duran, I agree with Mr. Perez. I don't think that Mr. Duran's intentions were to micromanage just to say, just to have an open conversation in front of council and say, this is not, we don't agree with this, if this is happening in, we don't know if it is or it's not. I mean, I myself had questions on that, if it's happening or not happening. But we do know that we've had other chiefs in the past and they were not like Chief Burton. So we, right now, Chief Burton, we're placing all our trust in you that you, that you are directing our police officers and treating our citizens with fairness. Because, just because they were bad, you know, last year, doesn't mean, you know, that you treat them the same for every, you keep treating them for that situation that they've already paid for. But anyways, I, I, I think we should be able to have an open conversation. Maybe it was worded, you know, maybe we should be a little bit more sensitive how we worded before we, you know, put it on the agenda. But other than that, I love the fact that you brought it up, Mr. Duran. Thank you.
Mr. Duran?
Oh, Chief, I think you went way and above what I had hoped to get from this. You added a, a lot more to it than what I wanted and I thank you for that. I think I'm going to change my, my motion to have you advise civil service as to the procedures that you outlined so we can, so we can get them on paper. That way there won't be any, you know, you've already made the order, but this way it'll be after you're gone, which hopefully won't be for a long time. But for the next police chief, that way it's, it's set in concrete. They are going to help somebody that is in distress. They are going to intervene when somebody is doing what they shouldn't be doing. And, you know, you, you laid it out very well. And so I'm going to change my motion to direct Chief Burton to make recommendations to the Civil Service Commission.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Perez?
And, and that's, I, 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 that's, that's a much better approach, Mr. Duran, I believe. And I agree with you because, and I apologize, my cat and my dog are backing me back. Anyway, I just want to make sure, I just, I, I think that, I, I think we're being more proactive by doing that because it's very easy. Yes, Chief Burton has been an awesome chief, but, you know, changes happen, retirements happen. And so somebody else with a different temperament may come in and unravel whatever, whatever standing orders were, were given. And so I think that, that we need to, to your point, make it more solid and, and really write it in, in the form of rules and procedures and regulations within civil service.
Mayor, we do have three speakers for this item. Our first speaker is Sal Chagoya.
Uh, yes, so I think I'd rather put my faith in the chief than on, on, on elected official. Why? Because Chief Burton has the experience, he's gone through the training, he's gone through the ranks, he's taken the oath, just like anybody, like anybody else that has served in the military or has served as a police officer, we take that oath very seriously. And even when we get out or even when we retire, we still carry that oath until, until we're gone. So I believe that Chief Burton has done what needs to be done. But when we put stuff like that in the agenda, it could also possibly kill the morale of the police officer. But we've got to look at that too. Because, just because we're having a discussion, you don't know what's going on inside those four, four walls. And those police officers could legitimately be feeling that the morale is getting killed because our sitting council is not supporting them. So we have to be careful when we address things like this. Understand we have a responsibility to the public, but also take in consideration to those that are protecting the public as well too. Because I know that most of you guys would have that seat dial for 911 or call the chief to assist you guys if you guys were in a situation of harm.
Our second speaker is Jesse Montelongo.
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank the chief for doing a phenomenal job. I would like to state that I'm glad he came from the outside, not from El Paso, not from around this area because he doesn't know anybody, he doesn't owe any favors, he's not bought, he's not corrupt, he is a military veteran and he's got, he's got the army values, he's also got police values. So he knows what he's doing. His officers are a lot of, a lot of, he cleaned house when he got there. He's brought in a bunch of veterans with army values, with good values. I've been in the army twenty-eight years, I went to combat twice. And sometimes you do have to intervene when, even when a soldier's doing something he shouldn't be doing because when adrenaline is flowing and blood pumping, you know, people do things they normally wouldn't do because it's your life or their life, but all lives matter. So I think, I think the Socorro Police Department has done a great job. I've dealt with them because I'm on the crime watch program here in District Four and I've, I've, I've had to call the police on a lot of people for, for different reasons. And they, they always give the people out here in the community every chance possible to just, you know, get them, give themselves up. They even give them chances, warnings. They've done everything possible to help the people rather than to hurt the people. So I think that chief knows what he's doing and I think we need to give him that respect and that courtesy. And Chief, thank you for what you've done. We still have a lot of work to do.
Mr. Montelongo, your time is up.
We need, okay.
Miriam Cruz?
Hi, I want to thank Mr. Duran for bringing this item up. I actually appreciate that we were able to have this conversation in the public because I'm not really sure how else the public would have found out that you, that, you know, that Chief Burton is trying to get this to the Civil Service Commission and trying to get something passed and, and moving along. So I appreciate that and I also didn't really understand what the problem was with why. Why it hasn't gone to Civil Service Commission, it, it kept cutting out. So I wasn't really sure if it, if it's because there's no quorum or if it was for another reason. So I hope you guys can just briefly, restate why the, the things that Chief Burton is trying to move forward or move along aren't being able to, to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Perez?
No, I just wanted to clarify that Chief Burton stated that the reason why it's been taking a while is just the sheer amount of revisions that need to be made. And so that, that'll take time in itself. So it's not that, that the commission isn't willing or can't, it's just the amount of work involved in, in, in making those revisions.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos? Is Villa Lobos? Yes.
Item number twenty-four, discussion and action to ban any neck restraint chokeholds from our police department. Mr. Duran?
I'd like to make a motion, well, I'd like to amend this and do the same and let Chief Burton do an overview of what's happened and have him report back to us as to the use of chokeholds or any other cartore type of hold or any hold that restricts the airflow to somebody. I think it's best if we let the chief, and that's, this is why we have a council, so we can bring it up. Because if we just go to the chief and have him look at it, the people don't know that we are worried about this. That is why, you know, yeah, to, for what the constituents said that it doesn't belong in council. This is exactly where it belongs. We're the ones that make the decisions, but the chief is the one that implements those decisions. And if, we need his input as to how we can vote on these decisions that we're going to make. So my motion is to not ban, but refer the use of neck restraint chokeholds to our chief of police.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, yes, I, I, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent. I just want to add that President Trump, two days ago, signed into executive order the ban across the country on chokeholds. So that is great. And like I said, Mr. Duran, you know, I agree with you a hundred percent. If people don't know that we're being proactive, and that's the key word. We, this council and the city of Socorro is being proactive because we do not want to be reactive. Look at what the, the rest of the nation is going through. We thank God, and I'm knocking on wood, that we don't go through this. Thank God. But we are being proactive and this is one way, and I understand why, why Mr. Duran brings this up. It's not that we want to micromanage, it's just that we want it to be known that we as council are being proactive and that's why we want to bring it, and that's great. So, aye.
Mayor, we have three speakers for this item. Sal Chagoya?
Mr. Duran, laughing. So I just want to say that, you know, I'd rather put the expertise in the chief because again, he has all this training versus somebody that has never been a police officer or has not been in the military, that's what I was referring to. But there is, President Trump did sign an executive order on police reform. But there is, President Trump did sign an executive order on police reform. So that's something that a decision has already been made. So when I saw this at the agenda, basically, you know, it's, it's, it's already in the executive order on the police reform. So I'm not sure if that's something that I'm pretty sure that Chief Burton will start looking at and probably start changing policy because it is coming from the president. Thank you.
Jesse Montelongo?
Uh, yes, we're, we're still on 24, correct?
24.
Hello?
On 24?
Yeah, I think that, 24, right, okay. I think that, yeah, the president has, because there's been, we don't have that problem here. We haven't had that problem here because I know a lot of the police and I've seen them work. And like I said, they always give, because the people out here, the voters, the constituents, they always give them, they always give them a chance. They always warn them, they try to talk to them. And, yeah, they do arrest them. But if someone's trying to take your life or kill you or grab your gun, that changes, that, you know, that changes the adrenaline starts flowing, things happen sometimes unintentionally. But Chief Burton's gotten body cancer. All the police officers donated by the US Army, by the way. And, and, and so I think he's doing a good job. He knows, he's got good integrity and morals. And he knows, he knows what's right and what's wrong. And his police officers are also veterans. And they know what's right and what's wrong. And that, we all, just like the other gentleman said, we, we all took an oath when we joined the United States Army. And we take it to the grave till, till the day we die. And like, same with the police. So police combatives are very important. And, yeah, he needs to take a look at his training, his combatives, his techniques, and work with his people and, and see what they can do to, to alleviate, so they don't have to use those kind of tactics. But at the same time, they have to protect their own lives because they do take a lot of risks out there.
Mr. Montelongo, your time is up.
They protect me. Yes, ma'am.
Miriam Cruz?
Hi. So, uh, again, I just want to appreciate that these items were brought up in city council. I do believe that they were important to be brought up during city council. One of the things I wanted to mention is that me, I personally have had really positive interactions with the city of Socorro Police. And I appreciate that. I can appreciate that, you know, I've, I've been able to speak to Chief Burton, Lieutenant Smith, and Lieutenant Ray, and other officers in a very positive light. But I have mentioned before in other meetings that I have had, I have friends who are regularly pulled over and they just happen to be darker. And so Senator Rodriguez's point, I don't believe we're completely 100% immune from what's going on in the rest of the country. I don't believe that our officers have any bad intent. But that's the whole point, is that some of, sometimes they are so, they're in auto, they're, they're, I don't know, there's an issue. And potentially, there can be an issue. So I appreciate that these things are getting pushed forward because now's the time. Not, not later, not when it's too late. And so I appreciate that we're talking about this now and not after the fact, not after something happens. Thank you.
Mr. Duran?
If you read the proclamation from the president, it bans chokeholds except when the officer is in imminent danger. So that's not a chokehold ban. And if you have somebody in a chokehold, they're the ones that are in imminent danger, not the officer. So we have to look at that and that's up to Chief Burton. And to say that it doesn't happen in Socorro, it happened right in front of the Water Burger where a gentleman was under arrest and he was sat on and he died from positional asphyxiation. So we have to not forget what has happened in the past because we will forget it when it happens in the future. And we have to make sure that that never happens again in Socorro. And this is the type of thing that I hope Chief Burton looks at. Adrenaline flowing. The officer, you know, I mean, let's face it, what we saw in Atlanta, the two officers got their butts stripped. The adrenaline was flowing and they lost control. We need, we need to make sure that doesn't happen in Socorro. And chief, you're going to have to work with training and how to use what we have. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Mayor, if I could talk to this?
Chief Burton?
Thank you. So, and I mentioned this to Mr. Duran because we did have a conversation about this. But just for public education purposes, so you know where this sits on our force continuum. It is in our policy. We are allowed to use it because it's allowed by state law. And you are correct when you point out the fact that the president's order bans it except for where it will be an imminent, where the officer's life is in imminent danger. And that is what our actual policy language says, which puts it in our lethal forced category. So you cannot use this for the normal take down, arrest, contact, resistance even, where it would be a non-life threatening event. The way that our policy is written currently is that it is, it is a reason, it is the last measure that a reasonable person would, would assume would save the life of an officer or the life of a third person. So where this could come into play is if I have an individual that is sitting on somebody and there is no other way to remove that individual and the person underneath them is suffering severe injury and/or possible death, then this hold would be used to remove that individual from the person that they are threatening. Whether that be a police officer underneath them or whether that be a citizen underneath them. But the police officer recognizes, according to our current policy, the police officer must recognize that is, that is the last thing that they have available short of their firearm in that saving that person's life or their own life. Just so you know, and I just want to put that out there, just so you know where it sits currently in our policy.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevades?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos? Ms. Villalobos?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Item number 25, discussion on action on creating an ordinance review committee.
Mr. Duran?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this. We've been talking about this, I've been talking to this with Mr. Rodriguez probably since he's been in office. And I think it's time that we just get it done. Most cities call it a sunset commission. In other words, what they do is they review every policy, every ordinance that a city has and looks at them for relevance and for, you know, if they're, if they're relevant for the time or even relevant to even have. They would make recommendations to the city council and we would decide whether we need to eliminate them or adjust them as needed. And that's the reason I brought this. You need a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have three speakers for this item. Sal Chagoya?
Yeah, so the only concern that I would have is the understanding if there's a committee. You know, I'm not saying that we don't have qualified people. But when, even if you just read it, some of the language just really, it's kind of really out there. So that would be one of my concerns that, you know, this committee's formed, will they be able to comprehend, you know, not just what the city needs, but do they understand, you know, if there's anything in regards that the county needs to input or even at a state level? So those are my concerns that, you know, it's not just a possibly a, a, a local city ordinances, but it could be brought to, to, to bigger governments or, or institutions in regards to policies. And, and I think that that's where I kind of just, I'm kind of iffy in that situation. But other than that, I, I really just think it's a good idea. But, you know, I would just caution of that understanding. Thank you.
Jesse Montelongo?
Uh, yes, I would like to piggyback off of what the other, the other gentleman said. I think it's a good idea, Mr. Duran. However, we need to choose the right people for those positions because they need, they need to have a broad knowledge of a lot of things, not just the charter. The city charter is outdated, I know that. And the Civil Service Commission, we have a meeting on the 20th, as you all know. But we have been, we haven't had enough commissioners to have a meeting. That's why we haven't had a meeting. And Chief Burton's really been pushing on getting these policies looked at, reviewed and, and up to your office so you all, at the city hall, so you all can vote on them or, or turn them down or amend them. I think it's a good, a, a review committee would be great for the ordinances because there's a lot of ordinances that are out of date. And Socorro has changed, it's not the same Socorro it used to be. I've been here 31 years. And we have to adapt, but we also have to change a lot of the old ordinances to, to comply with the, the new way of life, the quality of life that we have now, which is better. It's getting better, it's not going to happen overnight. But I think this is a positive step in the right direction. That's all I got to say.
Miriam Cruz?
Thank you.
Ms. Cruz?
Hi, I wanted to just, yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree, Mr. Duran. I think this is something should have happened a long time ago. That's it, thanks.
Mr. Perez?
Um, I think that in terms of, yes, it is a good idea that we establish a committee like this. But I think that we would have a staff member handle this because it's for that same reason. In case there are technical questions that, that need explanation in terms of what, or clarification for the, for the, for the members. So we're not going to, I don't think we would send the committee just out like that and, and, and just wander through the, through the ordinances of whatever we have without having a technical person to be able to answer things if necessary.
Mr. Duran?
Yeah, definitely, I know, I would not want, if an ordinance is regarding planning and zoning, I'd want to have our city planner there. If the plan, if the ordinance is regarding our police department, I'd want to have the chief of police there. If the ordinance is regarding finance, I'd like to have our finance director there. Of course, we cannot just, you know, let them all out. And in fact, I, you know, I would like to see if we could rotate council members, just one council member and then the next time a different council member to give our perspective of what's going on. Because we're the ones that have to live with these ordinances. And a lot of times, they do, you know, we, we've come across them and they, they are totally against what, what we need to move the city forward. That way we can have a staff member from the department that it affects. We would probably also have to have an attorney to make sure that what we're doing is legal. And also a, a, a member of council to kind of like see what's going on. Because a lot of times unless we, and we can't all go to the meetings. I think we can rotate, you know, one, one go to one meeting, one go to another meeting. And that way, we can also keep council abreast of what's going on as far as our ordinances. Because a lot of them, maybe whoever we appoint really don't understand them because they have not had the, the, you know, have not had to deal with them. So I think that would probably be the best bet. I don't know what, what the rest of you think. But definitely, whoever this, and then also have our city manager present. Because she's the one that implements all of the rules and regulations and ordinances that this council enacts. So she would have to be there. And also an attorney plus the department head that it affects. That's just what I think we should have.
Renee Rodriguez? Mr. Rodriguez?
I just wanted to say something real quick. This is something that should have been done a long time. I know that we have a lot of things to be done. I've always said that our ordinances are antiquated and this is one step to move it forward. It takes forever to change our ordinances. And this is, this is something great because I've been saying this for, you know, a year already that we need to change and, and we need to make sure that, you know, the old policies aren't working for us. And, and, and I agree, we, it's time to, to do something about it. So, aye.
Cesar Nevades?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Item number 26, discussion on action on charter amendments, articles four, section 4.01 through section 4.03.
Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, on section, let me see. I had it here. On section 4.01, on D, it says, "City council shall be prohibited from appointing city manager to a term, a contract longer than 24 months." I think that because everybody here already is in a four-year cycle, I think that we should amend that part and make it a four-year term. I just want to stress out that in the city of Socorro, they gave Tommy a five-year contract. The reason being, and I asked, what was the purpose?
Not Socorro.
Huh? No, no, no. Sorry, El Paso, thank you. The reason why is because they want continuity. They wanted that when council moves, at least somebody's still there to move all of the things forward. When you start changing, then, then it's very difficult to keep everybody on track. So those are the issues. And one of the things is, just as council as well, it's very hard when you, you get an elected official and then they, they're removed the following year and so forth and so forth. Because it's very difficult to keep the, the, the continu-, the continuity of the city. And, and I think that that's the position. I don't know if we should go five years or four, but I think four should be because we're in four terms, a four-year cycle. But I don't know what everybody thinks about that.
Mr. Duran?
On section 4.01, section, or paragraph A, it says that it's, the city council shall appoint a city manager by contract approved by a four-fifth vote. But six of us vote on that. Mayor votes on that item also. Shouldn't it be five-sixths? It needs to have a majority, a supermajority, not just a, because this is a very, very important job. I think we need to change that to five-sixths instead of four-fifths. Because then we're cutting, you know, it, it mathematically, it doesn't work.
Mayor, mayor?
Mr. Martinez?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Duran is, is right. And it's certainly a policy decision. I mean, council could decide or propose otherwise. But the way that's written, I mean, it's, it just creates, it's just problematic. I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it sows the seeds of conflict. And if nothing else, it's just a disagreement about how to interpret it. My recommendation is whatever supermajority council wishes to adopt, that you spell out as a fraction of a six. Or, or at least, and, and I realize council may expand in the future. And there may be more seats on council. But if you're going to keep it as a, a fraction, it's got to be a fraction of a six. If you want to avoid a fraction, you could just say a minimum of blank votes. And the other thing that I would recommend is it says of the entire council. I think we all recognize, I mean, that, that's not a terribly clear way to say it. Inferentially, the, the, the charter is saying the mayor gets to vote. Well, it would be a lot easier if you just had a declarative sentence then that said, "When hiring or terminating a city manager, the mayor shall, shall vote, not only when there's a tie, whether or not there is a tie." That would clarify.
Mr. Rodriguez?
So, um, um, I, I, I understand, I, I believe, I understand why they put four-fifths. Um, I guess they didn't take into account that the mayor was gonna vote. Um, and I think they wanted to leave it at, at not an even, because if you leave it at six, it could be three and three, and then what? Um, I understand, uh, what is, what does council have to say about that?
I think we could either go, um, four out of six or five out of six, and that would just alleviate the problem.
Mr. Duran?
Yeah, this, you know, uh, we also, the mayor also votes on the appointment of the chief of police. That also is a, a, um, I mean, a very, very important job. City manager's a very important job. We need to be either united and, like you say, a three-three vote, then there, it, it would be like a, uh, a four-five vote, or a, a six-two vote, or, no, pardon me, a four-two vote. It, it just, it wouldn't happen. We have to be completely in agreement behind it and that we can only allow for one dissension. So, uh, five out of the six sounds good to me. And because, I mean, it's a very important, and also further down, um, on, I, on paragraph D, it also says four-fifths. So I think we need to also change that one to five-sixths.
Whatever we're gonna change on A, correct?
Yes. Five-sixths, five out of the six. And then we need to put, like Jim said, the, the language, the mayor is gonna be voting too. Correct, Jim?
Yes, sir, that's my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Perez?
I, I think that that four-fifth is, uh, refers to the amount of, that there were actually five members of city council at that time when, uh, when this was drafted.
Intequated.
So I, uh, the, so, because everyone that was at large and, and those before, it was, it was, there was districted and those kinds of things. So I think that, um, if we go up at the sixth, I mean, that, that is, that, that's fine. Um, I think that in terms of, uh, I know that Mr. Rodriguez mentioned about the city manager's contract. Um, I think that i- if, um, we could do it that way, the four years, um, and, and that way, um, there is that continuity, uh, and it allows the, the city manager, whomever, and again, Ms. Rolata has a good job. Um, but if she, uh, you know, speaks greener pastures, um, then, um, we need to, uh, be able to, um, offer, um, the city manager the well-thought-to be able to do the job without, uh, any, and again, we're a good city council, but, you know, we can't predict the future. Not, not have a future city council, uh, be on them and maybe even try to micromanage them. So I think that this is the, that, that would be a, a good, uh, a good alternative. That's all.
Mr. Rodriguez?
So, just to be on the same page, we're kind of agreeing on five-sixths on A and D, and then a four-year contract, correct? Okay. So my other conclusion comes to, on paragraph D, it says a severance package of no more than six months prohibited. So, since we're already going from, from two to four years, then, uh, for all intents and purposes, we've seen it in the past. I'm not saying we're the same council, because I've always said, "We are a better council because we understand." Okay? So, I believe that to, there, there, there's people that will always say that we as council members are doing a horrible job and we don't do nothing. But yet people don't, and, and this is where I'm getting at for this. So I'm just giving you a content so that we can understand where I'm going and why I'm saying what I'm saying. There's people that tell us that we, council members, are, aren't doing and that we're corrupt and we don't have the city's best interest. Okay? No matter what we do. But we've overlaid more than a hundred streets, we've brought sidewalks, we've done a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, safe routes to school, we have worked with the, with the irrigation district, we have worked and gotten the stone garden back, we have done all of this great stuff. We have even built the, the, uh, old welcome mail tanks. Um, so, we have done a lot for this city. And yet, we get ridiculed. The same thing with, 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 um, with, with city manager's position. There's times where I, when I got elected, people were saying at the time that, uh, our ex, um, uh, city manager wasn't doing a great job and this and that, and he was corrupt and, and so forth. Um, and then I started to, to, to work with individuals and I started to see what was really happening. And it, it changed my mind and my perception of how the city was running. So with that said, there's a lot of people that have this intention of, of, as soon as they get here, they wanna fire everybody. And I think we need to do something to deter that so that we can give the opportunity to the city manager to prove their worth, their, their worth. Because they're proving it to us, but we don't know what other councils, because they might be told a lie, or they might be told or in, in belief that they're, they're not doing a great job. I'm not talking about just this, I'm just talking about that in my reign, I have seen differences of, of, of the quality of work in this position. So I'm just saying that if we could do a year severance, just to deter people, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. Because I'm not saying for this one, we're saying from now on, um, just to deter that mentality so that they can work with these, uh, with our staff before we fire them.
Mr. Duran?
Um, we have to also remember who we work for, our constituents. Um, the city, the city manager makes in excess of a hundred thousand a year. Uh, I think a severance package of six months is more than adequate to, um, buoy somebody from job to job. That's over fifty thousand dollars as a severance package. So we, we also have to remember who we work for, the people of Socorro. And I think it would be kind of like, uh, not wasting money, but we need to watch how we spend the constituents' money. And I believe it's, you know, over a hundred thousand dollar severance package, I think is, is a little bit much. I could, I think we ought to leave that one alone at six months. And, um, and that'll show our, our constituents that, hey, we're looking out for your money too. Cause a lot of people would wanna just say, "No, just fire him, don't give him anything." But they put in all this time and work into our city and we do owe them something so that they can continue working and, and trying to get another job elsewhere. And this will buoy them in that time. So I think we need to leave that one alone.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, council, my, I don't wanna venture into giving a policy opinion, my, just legally, I can tell you, it's fairly uncommon to see a, a limitation or see any kind of severance package in any kind of quanti- quantified form addressed in a charter. That typically doesn't happen. I mean, your charter's supposed to be, you know, your governing document, your statement of principles, kind of your mission statement. And the details get left to ordinances and individual votes. And so legally, typically what you would see is, that would not be in a charter and you would leave it to in individual elected, individual councils, elected councils, to make a decision in any one case about what is or isn't available as a severance package. And perhaps obviously, I can tell you, if you took that, if voters took that out, that provision out of the charter, then city council, any elected city council could still abide by it. You, you could still say, "Well, we don't, we don't offer more than six-month severance." But there will be times when you get, you know, some superstar candidate, um, no- nothing against our current city manager, when Ms. Rolata graduates to greener pastures or she becomes the city manager of Dallas, you may go on a search and you may find some superstar candidate. For whatever reasons, let's say Socorro is much bigger then and, and pick a name. Um, Barack Obama moved to West Texas and he'd like to dabble as a city manager of, uh, Socorro. But his terms are, he's gotta have a year severance. Well, you might wanna give the future city council some flexibility to make that call on the fly as opposed to say, "I'm, I'm hamstrung by the vote we took ten years ago."
Mr. Martinez, would that also be addressed on the contract?
Yes, of course, yeah, that typically, that, that, that's a good point. Typically, it's not in this, in the charter. Where it is addressed almost uniformly is in the city manager's contract. I don't think I've ever seen a city manager's contract, and I've seen a lot of them, that didn't have that addressed in it.
Mr. Perez?
I, I think that what we could do is stipulate that the city council will, uh, at the time of the, of the departure of the city manager, will have a, a severance package prepared for the, that person, whomever that is. So that, so we can say, so that in a charter, we can say, "Yes, uh, you need to have one, but, but the council at that time would make a determination as to what would be appropriate in terms of a severance package."
I agree.
Mr. Duran?
Yeah, I think i- if you put in there, um, instead of a, a severance package, um, will be determined by city council. Would that be enough, Jim?
Yes, sir, it, it gets you to the same place, um, you don't have to have it in there, any reference to it at all. Uh, my, my only concern is if you do say a, a severance package will be determined, that, that's sort of an implication that there has to be one. And again, in terms of flexibility, I think you wanna give future city councils, "Look, up with this particular candidate under the terms we, we worked out, they want a particularly high salary and what we're requiring in, in return, our quid pro quo is no severance." That's the deal.
So, what you're suggesting is, would you leave that off of the, uh, charter?
Yes, sir.
Good. I'm on board.
I have no problem with it, as long as, as long as there's, well, the, you know, that, um, that they would make sure that there is, well, that it would, if it's appropriate, that one would be, one, one would be developed as far as the severance package is concerned. So, yeah, if it's off the chart, that's okay.
We could do an ordinance too for that.
Or it'd be in the contract.
Mm-hmm, or be in the contract.
I think it would be better if it was just, um, left in the contract. That way, it could give a city council the flexibility, depending on the employee and depending on the employee's, um, work. Jim, um, I know that earlier we had, uh, come across this topic as far as the deadline to include the charter amendments in the, in the election?
Yes, ma'am. Um, that's a, that's a timely issue, I'm glad you brought it up. Uh, I sent, I, I know, I, I know we sent the circulated memo to council last year and I think I sent it again in January or February of this year. And, and I realize, since February, the world has blown up and we've all been distracted. Um, but, and I have the memo here and I can resend it to council. Um, the, the last day to adopt the ordinance is August seventeen. Okay, and that's the adoption, that's the second reading and adoption. So you work backwards from that, that, there's only one August meeting. If you use the regular meeting day, there's only one meeting in August before the seventeenth, that's the sixth. So that means that, that if we're, unless we're gonna call a special meeting, you have to have the ordinance calling for the charter election adopted and passed by the sixth. That means it has to be introduced at the s- at the second meeting in July, which is the sixteenth, which is only one meeting after the next meeting, cause the next meeting is July second. And I, I would give your staff and certainly I'd give me a meaningful chance to do the draftsmanship. Um, it's a forty-page document as it is now. And we all know there's, I mean, we're doing this for a reason, because there's a lot of problems with it and it needs fixing. And so the draftsmanship itself is not a small task, I mean, that's a project. I would, I mean, your staff can start it, right? Ms. Rolata, they can assign it to someone internally. Ultimately, I think I'm gonna do the lion's share of the drafting. You know, I, I can't do it in two days, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need...
Four?
Five working days, ten would be better, so I can make sure to get you the complete, finished, polished product. All of which is a long way of saying, "The deadline's upon us." I mean, to get, to get it introduced and passed by the deadline, which for us is the meeting of August sixth, we have to get it done very, very quickly. I mean, it, it needs to be introduced by the sixteenth, which means I need to start drafting the final form of it by the next meeting, which is July second.
So we can do, I think we, we, how many more sections do we have?
Lot. Ms. Rolata?
Correct, so the charter has fifteen oh one sections, you're on section four oh three. So you have about eleven more sections to go, about twenty-eight more pages. So I would say that we could send you the next twenty-eight pages for review tomorrow and then be ready with your changes on July second. I already have a staff member that's working on our documents and taking minutes verbatim on this item so that we can make sure that we grasp every, what everybody's telling us. But I would like to call a special meeting after July second to provide you the final changes that we are catching, right? Because everybody has different ideas and then you all come to a consensus at the end. But sometimes that could be a little confusing. So when we bring back the item, you guys can review and make any changes at that time.
Mr. Perez?
Um, do you not, do you think that we're kind of rushing it? Um, in terms of, I don't know, it, it's just that, um, I would hate to, and I'm not, and I'm not disparaging your, uh, your, the staff's ability to, to turn this around, but in terms of actually contemplating the document and giving it the, the attention it deserves, uh, I think that would be sacrificed if, and, and believing, I, I know I'm wants a new charter more than I do. But I don't know if, if we're, uh, overextending ourselves and trying to get this, um, trying to jump through a lot of, uh, hoops and hurdles and then not have a, a quality document at the end.
Ms. Rolata?
Jim, do you know if we can do changes on this election for the sections that we've reviewed? And then we do have an election next year, do the other section?
Yes, you, I'm almost certain there is no waiting period after a charter election. I can't recall that specific provision on the, on the, off the top of my head. I can get you an answer by the close of business tomorrow. I don't, I don't think that, that exists. I think you're free to do that. And let me, let me go back and ask, answer Mr. Perez's question here, just to answer your question? Yes?
Mr. Duran?
Uh, the charter can only be, uh, changed every two years.
Well, we could do half and then wait for the other two years to do the other half.
Yeah, I, I, I was gonna say, you might not, do you think that's in the election code, Mr. Duran?
Uh, I've read it someplace, um, because when they changed the charter, uh, the last time, somebody wanted to change it again and it came up that you can only change it every two years.
You, you may be right, I simply don't remember off the top of my head. But my, my suggestion is going to be, if you're going to divide it up, which at this point probably makes sense, it's certainly one option, you might wanna wait at least two years anyway for the next one, because that will coincide with the next regular election. Then you don't incur the expense of an election solely for the purpose of a charter.
Mr. Perez?
Um, would it, even if it's, and again, this is, I, I don't know the answers, I'm just asking, would it, um, is it possible that, um, if we do have, like, whatever sections we do, that's, um, it, it's not the same sec- it wouldn't be the same sections going up for elections or, or for approval by the, by the constituents?
I, if there's a, if there's a timeline, I doubt that helps you, but let me do the research and all my depth tomorrow.
Because we're, it wouldn't be the same, it wouldn't be the same articles or the same item up for a vote.
I don't think that is gonna help. If there's a limit on charter election, on, on the timing of charter elections, if there's a minimum waiting period, I, I would be reasonably confident it's for any charter election period.
Irrespective of it being different section.
Right.
Mr. Duran?
I, I think we can go through as many as we can. A lot of the, um, the sections, they don't need any, any tweaking. So I think we, we need to not just say, "Oh, we're gonna, wanna go do..." So I think we, we need to not just say, oh, we're gonna, wanna go do half of it. Let's try and do as much as we can. If we can get three-quarters of it, let's do it.
I agree.
So I will send.
I, I know, I absolutely, no, no, I, I just, I just don't wanna be so rushed that we're, or we're, that we're trying to, yeah. No, it, get as much done as possible. No, I, I completely agree.
Ms. Perez?
I will send you the rest of the charter tomorrow. That way you can start reviewing and see what we can knock out next council meeting. And then from there, we'll work the changes. And I will also present the changes that we've already talked about.
Ms. Duran?
I mean, if we have to do a special meeting, um, I mean, this is an important document. We need to get it right. And we need, you know, even if we have to do two special meetings, okay, one special long meeting, Mr. Perez. That way.
I was, I was trying to, to get attention to that.
Oh, I thought you wanted one meeting. Okay, no, but we can, we can work to, I mean, we, we're all on this together. We're all on the same boat. We know that it's a flawed document. It's antiquated. We need to change it so that future councils, important, you know, as far as us too, will have a quality document to work with. And if we do work, if we do our work, we'll get it done.
No, I, I, I agree. No, I think that, um, we've been piecing it, uh, so much that we do need to have a meeting to, to review the entire document. Uh, so that, so just, just to be on the safe side, just to say that we reviewed it all as one doc, because it's, uh, piecing it, it has, it has been helpful in addressing the sections, but we need to see a completed draft of the document.
Do we have any other comments on changes on this particular section?
We do have a couple of speakers. Just one.
Maryam Cruz? Mayor, she's not on the line anymore.
We have any other speakers, Ms. Rolata?
No, not anymore.
Do we have anything for items twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or twenty-nine?
Mayor, mayor, just give me, just give me like thirty seconds. Hold on real quick.
Ten. Nine.
Hurry. We're good, we're good. No, no, I, I just read it. Yeah, we're good.
Can we move on, Mr. Rodriguez? I don't need to ask you.
No, no, we're ready, we're ready.
Anything on items seven, twenty-eight, or twenty-nine?
Come here.
Motion. Items number twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine.
Okay.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nebaris?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos? Ms. Villa Lobos? You can't hear me?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nebaris?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Thank you all. Good night.
Eight fifty-four.
Thanks, everybody.
Eight fifty-four, we adjourn.